Well, good evening. This is the July 25th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First off, we have an adjournment. It's appeal number 2019-005. The Donnellys. They've asked for an adjournment to August 8th. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go, lady.
Then we have two reserve decisions. First one, appeal 2019-022, Dreamland Builders, 406 Osborne Avenue, Riverhead, tax map number 600-12616, D.C. zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 231A, where proposed development includes 25 parking stalls, and required number of stalls is 27.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Um, I haven't seen the reserve decision. Is there anything in particular that was addressed? Or is it a standard resolution?
It's a standard.
No, because I have the plan here. Can I speak with your attorney?
Sure.
That represents Dreamland?
I don't think they're here. Last time you told them they didn't have to be here.
I'm just concerned about some foot traffic that's going to cut through north into that parking. So, um, maybe we can...
Whatever you want to do.
Can we make it a condition that they put a foot path? Because they'll just trample all of the bushes to get through the parking. And they're asking for two less spots, so I figured we might as well work something out with the planning department. So, we'll make it subject to a foot path, to access to two additional parking spots. That's on the amendment.
All right, we have a second?
On the amendment.
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that's on both of those.
Okay, next up?
Next is a reserve decision for appeal 2019-023, Dreamland Builders, 836 East Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number 600-1276, 7.1, H.A. zoning for variances and or relief from chapter 301, section 57A, where proposed impervious surface is 67.2 percent of the lot area, and maximum permitted is 60 percent.
Voice.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, let's get into the main business.
First public hearing, appeal number 2019-026, 1315 West Main LLC, 1315 West Main Street, Riverhead, tax map number 600-119238, RFC zoning for an interpretation of chapter 301, section 164C, where building for firearm testing sighting is not customarily accessory to pre-existing non-conforming retail use.
Counsel?
Good evening. Pleasure to be here.
As always.
This is a particular matter that we'd like you to focus on because the denial talks about pre-existing non-conforming retail use. And we've asked for an interpretation, but the interpretation has to be at two levels. First, we're concerned about the pre-existing non-conforming. We don't believe we are, and I'd like to go through a few things with you just historically. This is a site that's on West Main Street, between West Main Street and the river. It's approximately an acre in size. At one time, it was a delicatessen called the Fisherman's Delicatessen for about 35 years. It's operated by Winita Devlin, had bait and various things in connection with fishing. My client has now purchased this site, uses it as a fishing and equipment store, and also to sell guns. Has all the existing COs that it should, has a pre-existing CO, has a CO for alterations. But we have a denial letter telling us that even though it's on the river, and even though those things are river-related, that it's pre-existing and non-conforming. We think not. We think that it is completely within the zoning code as a river-related retail use. We have given you, and I will give you again, the DEC approval for this site. And I'd just like to hand up to you copies of the survey that have been approved by the DEC. I have with me tonight Charles Bowman, who's formerly of the DEC, who worked on his application with the DEC to get our approval. And I'd like him to discuss with you the river-related type uses which we have, again, fishing, hunting, boating. And this is a site where we intend to eventually have a canoe launching site. But Mr. Bowman is here, and I'd like him to speak.
Good evening. If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charles Bowman, President, Land Use Ecological Services for the applicant. Just to give the board a little background, when I was with DEC, which is, of course, I had no gray hair at that point, and I know Leroy knows that. But I actually helped develop the river's regulations with DEC, and mapped the carments and connect Quonter River boundaries. And as I know, the town is aware, there's a lot of problems with the river's regulations. They restrict uses to river or recreational-related uses, which include fishing, camping. You could have a motel as far as DEC on this site because transient lodging is allowed. These regulations were written for the entire state of New York, which really don't apply to Long Island very well. So, the DEC here on Long Island, with some guidance, and has tried to be very reasonable on how to promote river recreation, river usage. And it's not just the Peconic River. The Peconic River, as you know, starts up by Brookhaven Lab. It involves tributaries that actually incorporate an immense area of the Central Pine Barrens drainage areas. And these types of properties that have historic river uses are very important. I get calls all the time for people who want to put a used car lot, or they want to put a motel, or they want to put expand tanger, or all these other things in other rivers' areas that are not permitted. But this has actually been, in my experience, out here and on the Peconic River, a historic use over many, many years, as far as I can remember. People use this site and have used this site for fishing. They've used it for hunting, where they take their canoes and put them at the headwaters and come down and jump shoot ducks. They've used it for access to some of the Pine Barrens and park areas for deer hunting, for trapping. And those are the type of uses that are encouraged by the Wild Snake and recreational rivers act, which is Article 15, Title 27. And that being said, I think it's important for the town to try and encourage these types of uses because the applicant or the owners are kind of caught between the proverbial rock and a hard place. You know, they really can't go through any more. There's no other commercial uses. Industrial uses aren't allowed. Residential uses aren't allowed. And as crazy as the regulations seem, like I said, you could put a motel there. That would be allowed. Go figure. I mean, how does that work? It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. DEC was well aware that the redevelopment of this site as a fishing, hunting access point, in fact, DEC staff have used this as an access point to do their studies on the river. We've used it, you know, we do a lot of alewife studies. So, all of this is river-related. And I think the hunting aspect, whether people are pro-hunting or anti-hunting, doesn't really make any difference because it's a river-related use. People use that. They support the community. They support the taxes. And if that's where they're going to be going, duck hunting or deer hunting, it's important as an accessory use to the river's regulations. And in the specific DEC regulations, accessory uses are called out as uses that would help or assist the primary use, which would be recreation. Not just river-related, but recreation, river-related recreation, hunting, fishing, trapping, camping, those type of uses. So, DEC was aware of that. If you look at the plans that Mr. Cuddy had indicated to you, they, on the approved plan, they show a range for, you know, the testing of firearms that have been repaired. There's also on that plan, a dock that's being rebuilt that will be used for access to the river for fishing or hunting. We've also included areas in there for invasive species management because the property had been kind of trashed for years, buffer areas. And it was just, it was a good project for the river and, of course, for the ecology that it would help sustain. So, if you have any questions, but I can say, this is a simple one for me because it's not something that is in conflict with any of the regulations. Not made for you, but it may be, it is for us.
Not complicated. So, I'd like to direct question to Mr. Cuddy?
Sure.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Cuddy, when the applicant made an application to the building inspector, which was Brad, I would assume, back then?
That's right.
Did Brad give you any kind of, like, you made the application, did you get a use permit prior to that? Did you get a letter saying that this is a permitted use, or this is a non-conforming pre-existing use?
No, the letter he gave us said that it was a pre-existing non-conforming retail use.
That was Brad's interpretation?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're taking the position based on the somewhat application made that this should be a permitted use?
That's correct.
Based on this particular zone?
We believe that the riverfront corridor, which this is part of, which is 301-164 in the code, says river-related retail uses. That's exactly what this client is doing. He's doing fishing. He's doing the sale of hunting guns. And to me, that's river-related. He's also working on getting a canoe site there.
So, the building inspector gave you a letter of pre-existing use, and then a certificate of occupancy for the work that was completed?
We have COs for internal work at the site.
Material operation?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's part of it, yeah. So, the first part of our application is to have this board determine that this is a site which is part of the riverfront corridor, and it matches that definition, river-related retail use. And I think it absolutely does. The second part of our application is a little bit further. What we're saying to you is that this is a site where guns are sold. The, Mr. Newman is here. He's the principal of the company that is there, Bates and Barrels. And what they do is they sell guns. But he has, in a unique situation, he's a gunsmith. He repairs guns. He also has a dealer's license to buy antique guns. And he needs to be able to fire those guns because people only buy them if they work. But he also instructs, and so we're proposing to put there, and I will give you a copy of in just a second, is a gun container. The container is 10 feet wide. It's 50 feet long. It's in the middle of the property. It's 50 feet from any sideline. And what that is, is a container that has rubber ballistic material inside it. I've seen them. I've been in them. They actually take the bullets that are fired. They take them and spin them around. There's no lead that's ever lost because it drops down to the ground, and they dispose of them later in the day. But what these are, they're safe type units. We have, and I'm going to give you a copy. These are units that are attached to many gun stores. And I'm going to give you some samples of local people, meaning local in Suffolk County, that have exactly this type of situation. So, if you don't mind, I'll hand up to you.
Yeah, do you have a picture of it, or something?
I have a picture to show you, but I also have pictures of other places.
So, Mr. Cuddy, did Mr. Hammond act on the use permit application or the permit application based on what the applicant asked for?
Yes, the applicant...
And did the applicant doing it on his own, without any legal advice?
When you say that, you mean when the applicant made the...
When he made the application, was he specifically trying to cite and say, "This is a permitted use. This is my business"?
Yes, that's correct.
And they issued you a letter of pre-existing non-conforming, so they took a different position?
That's, he did at that point, yes.
And at that point, so he felt that was a battle that could be fought later, or...
I'm not sure ultimately that was the point that he really had, but yes, at that point, he did that. That's correct.
Okay. So now, so now we're trying to help him, one, establish the use as a permitted use, and two, whether this range would be accessory to that permitted use?
That's correct.
That's what you're asking?
Those are the two things I am. That's exactly right.
All right.
Here's copies to give us...
Lottie, you want to say something?
I just want to talk to Mr. Cuddy. It's really his...
Are you involved with this?
Yes, I am.
Well, let's see, either get you or the applicant up there.
Well, let's go try one. Field book.
So, what I've given you is a...
Pardon me?
I've given you a group of stores that have this gun range container.
And it keeps the noise down to a minimum?
Yes, it keeps the noise so it doesn't go above 65 decibels. Here's a statement to that effect from the people that manufacture it.
This is legit. Pretty sweet.
But the significance of this container is that it allows people to, one, have instruction. And by the way, only two people can go inside at a time. So, this is not a range where you have eight, 10, 12 people shooting. These are two people at a time that can shoot inside. It's a relatively small type unit because it's not longer than 50 feet. And as I said, what it enables the owner to do is to instruct, and also to show that when the firearm is repaired, that it can be used correctly.
Okay, all right.
And has been repaired correctly.
I'll tell you what, so they have a shop in quorum too? Is that part of the group, or?
No, these are, these are separate units.
Okay. I think they're down there and see it.
You got a piece?
I haven't fired a weapon in a long time.
Probably 45.
Now, is it up 60?
But we believe that this is an accessory unit. We believe that, again, in particular, that this is a river-related retail use, and this is accessory to that use.
Okay.
And I would like to hand up just some other things so you have them in the record, if I may. We have licenses that are federal firearms licenses.
I think we just got those, didn't we?
No, we didn't get those.
You have more?
We have gunsmith licenses from the state of New York. We have firearms dealer licenses from the state of New York and Suffolk County. And we have a dealer's license to buy itself.
Mr. Cuddy, whatever you want to enter into the record, we're not going to make a decision tonight, that's all.
Oh, I understand, but I just want to make these part of the record.
Absolutely. Only too happy.
I also have letters from the adjoining owners on both sides that do not object to this gun container.
Okay.
And perhaps most of all, what's important for Mr. Barnes, is I have a letter from Brad Hammond dated October 12th, 2018. It's very short, so I'll just read it to you.
Thank you.
Says, "Please be advised that the mixed-use building located at the above- referenced property, 1315 West Main, lawfully established by permit, ZB1," goes on, "and issued a certificate of occupancy, 26580, dated August 16th, 2016, is in compliance with the town code, in which specific use allows for the retail of firearms, ammunition, and accessory products in accordance with the applicable state and federal regulations."
So, he issued this after the initial...
No, he issued this before he issued. So, he's contradicted himself essentially because he said here, this is a river-related retail use. And that's what this letter says.
So, he established in his own mind that it is a permitted use?
At that point, he had, yes. That's right.
And I would assume the people that have replaced him was his department heads trying to say it's not? Should I assume that?
Well, I think they just took his position. That's right. They took his second position.
Okay.
But I'll hand all these up, if I may, just to be part of the record.
Is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? I guess, sir, please, step up.
Okay.
Take your time.
May please the panel?
Oh, hold on one second.
When you're ready, sir.
Kindly raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be gone.
That I do, sir.
And state your name and your address, please.
My name is Ruth Pollack, P-O-double-L-A-C-K, and I live at 1288 West Main Street, Riverhead, New York. And thank you very much for this opportunity to be heard on this matter. I just received the letter from Mr. Cuddy by certified mail about this issue, so I have no copies of anything except the letter to this board. My property is across the street from, directly across the street from, I should say, our property, our family property, is directly across the street from this store. I am opposing it, and I'll tell you why. I support the Second Amendment. Doesn't matter whether I do it or I don't, but I support the Constitution. And in this situation, there are children. This is a residential area historically. I've read the statute, the board statute, that this board, that Riverhead has, is looking at as well, as far as deciding what to do here. I have several issues with this. First of all, I have never had a chance to see the plans. I've never seen the photo. We don't know what weapons are going to be used within that container, which is, sounds rather large to me, and we don't know how powerful they are. So, those are all questions that have yet to be answered by any of these gentlemen. I'm sure they don't live here. I'm sure they live elsewhere. But I can tell you that my family goes back in this area, in this town, to the Civil War. We fought all the wars back to the Civil War. We built the big dock. I get all that. But what I'm concerned about is that there's so much that we don't know. This is not an area that's ever, ever been used for anything like this. I, my father and mother met over there, in that area where this place is located. It was a bait and tackle shop. I used to go there all the time. My father went there all the time. There are children that live literally three houses away. I was never approached from, for anyone. My family was never approached about this before it started. I find it, and I'm not being facetious when I say this, I say this with all due respect, I find it extremely hard to believe that these intelligent people purchased this property not planning to do what they're now asking this honorable board to approve. I believe that they purchased it with the intention, not then stated, of eventually getting in and then saying, "Oh, another thing we want to do is we want to test firearms on this plot of land," which, by the way, is not particularly large. Now, we have undeveloped property across from where I live. I have a wonderful relationship with the real DEC, not former, real. And every time kudzu appears on that property, I say to them, "Go do what you got to do. Apply what you have to apply to get rid of the kudzu." Kudzu's a plant. Now, we're talking about firearms. So, I guess what I'm saying to you, and I want to be as brief as I can, and, but I believe that we need time, those of us who live there and have to hear this, or know that this dangerous thing is there. We need the opportunity to see the plans, review the plans, look at the photos, have more evidence of the actual possible, and I think highly likely, danger that any explosives and arms may be to our community. My community has always been residential. Yes, it is indeed zoned commercial. But if you read the statute on which this whole thing is relying on, in the Riverhead statute, I believe this is a purely non-conforming use of this land. And I believe that, I think most of us who live there are aware that there is a Calvertin Shooting Range. That shooting range, which I support, and actually plan to go there someday to practice, that is between, as we all know, Edwards Avenue and the county center. You don't even know it's there because it's in sort of an outward area. It's not on a highway with children and families and traffic. It's not in a peaceful area where we now reside. So, while I respectfully understand that, and I respect commerce, and I respect, I'm an entrepreneur, so I respect being an entrepreneur, I think this was a plan that was put in place, but not put in place in an upfront way because I believe that this was the plan all along, and now, this board is now presented with, what do we do now? So, I'm just trying to take a quick look at my notes. You know, I don't know Mr. Cuddy, but I'm sure he...
Well, my suggestion is you and Mr. Cuddy get together.
I would love to do that. I mean...
Okay, so, we're going to adjourn this for the next meeting, so we'll have time to...
I would appreciate that, sir.
Check everything out, and go over everything with Mr. Cuddy, and then we'll see you at the next meeting.
Okay, and I would ask...
He basically laid out a plan and showed us all the different containers, and...
Yes, sir.
Certainly, they're going to try to certify it to be safe, but we have to do due diligence as well.
There is a place in quorum that I'm going to down and check out myself, so...
Sure, sure. And I say this with all due respect, I'm not here to insult a single person.
We are really here to interpret the ordinance and what it was meant to do.
And I agree with that, sir.
For those river-related issues along that river.
Mm-hmm.
And most people that live on that river or have businesses really were stymied by that legislation.
Understood and agreed.
So, this is very close to what I believe the town board had adopted in 2004, when they did the master plan. So, we have to look at it and say, is this what they intended?
Mm-hmm.
It's not necessarily what we intend, but we have to interpret it. That's it. We here for interpretive powers.
Mm-hmm.
And is it an accessory use? That's all.
Yeah, I agree.
But I give you that time to do the due diligence, and we'll be glad to make anything available to you if you would like it.
I would, I would really...
And we'll give you time to talk at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Fine. Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
Of course, when's the next meeting?
August 8.
August 8. August eight. Okay, let's move it on.
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number 19-026, 1315 West Main LLC, be adjourned to August eighth.
Someone...
Second?
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll see those folks on the eighth.
Can I get Mr. Cuddy? What was that, an intern? Should we share? Jack, can I get a copy? Say, "Copy it?" He gave it to him already?
No, he wanted me to have a copy of it.
Good. So we'll get him a copy? Good. So I want Mr. Cuddy to have a copy of it. This way, it's all fair. Okay, so... That'll be August eighth. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to be your...
Appeal number 2019-027, Timothy and Lisa Onderdunk, 121 Fire Lane, Waiting River, tax map number 63728.3, RB80 zoning for variances and a relief from chapter 301, section 31, where proposed lot size for single-family dwelling is 30,002 square feet, and minimum required is 80,000 square feet. Where proposed front yard setback is 40 feet, and minimum required is 60 feet. Where proposed side yard setback is 25 feet, and minimum required is 30 feet. Where proposed rear yard setback is 52.6 feet, and minimum required is 75 feet. And where proposed rear deck is 48.3 feet from property line, and minimum required is 75 feet.
Take your time.
This is not as exciting as the others.
At least you didn't trip. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name.
South Monica Majewski. I live at East Quack, 30 Stoller Drive. And...
Will you raise that mic a little bit, so you can, no, raise it up.
Lower it? Up.
There you go.
Better?
That's it.
What was your name again, please?
Monica Majewski.
Thank you.
So I'm actually representing the builder, which is Two Elm LLC, and the owner. The owner actually doesn't live in New York, lives in Massachusetts. So the owner, developer, are currently in contract pending the building permit, which required zoning, so that's why I'm here today. There was, this case was in front of this board in 2009 for similar variances, and which was granted, but I'm not sure why it wasn't ever built. So we are actually proposing slightly smaller house, about 1,700 square feet, and looking at Fire Lane map, and nearby Gregory Way. The board consists of like smaller and similar lots with sizes, house sizes anywhere between 1,200 and 2,000 square feet. All surrounding houses have access to public water, so obtaining the Department of Health for sanitary system approval should not be an issue, and we think the proposed variances and size of the house are reasonable as far as distance to surrounding houses and the character of Fire Lane as it is right now. We think that the variance would not produce any negative impact to any properties or, as the parcel is surrounded by single-family residences. I don't really have much more to say. I mean, it's all kind of black and white, so...
It is black and white. It's not colored.
Yeah, I know. It's black and white. So it's a zoning change. I know zone change in 2004. You know, if you look at Fire Lane, the houses are really small, so... There's a wide woodstap right across the street from them.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Step up. And if you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Kindly state your name and your address, and pull that mic up to you, to you a little bit.
Richard Olivo, 54 Carron Court, Waiting River.
Come on, Rich.
It's going. I have the adjoining property behind, and one of my concerns is the way the property pitches.
Yeah, it's got a big...
It's basically a basin bowl, and any of the runoff, the water, is going to continue to go from the area where they're building the house towards two adjoining properties. One is mine, and one, I believe, is 37 Carron Court. The more backyard, inside yard that are cleared, I don't know if this is a concern of your board or a planning board, the more property is cleared, especially in the back, the more water is going to leave their property and come to mine. It's a serious problem. It's not just simply building a house and asking for a few feet on either side and in the back. Right now, there's all vegetation. There's not any water problem. But once that property is cleared, I don't know if it's this board's jurisdiction or somebody else, but where is all the water going when the property is cleared?
We're granting, if we grant it, a variance for the area variance for setbacks.
Correct.
The building inspector is charged by the code to make sure that the water is maintained on the property.
Right.
The building inspector can make the owner put in drains all around that area to deal with that. Or fill could be brought in. There could be many ways to mitigate it. So we can condition something, but in the code, it's already there. So we would be repeating ourselves to say, "You must enforce the code." Of course, it's implied that they have to maintain the water runoff on their property.
Right.
So...
The more you give as far as variance, the more footage you allow, the more property is cleared, the more water problem there's going to be. I don't know if you guys are taking that into consideration.
When you look at the survey...
Please go back to the mic.
Oh, sorry. When you look at the survey, we put the house all the way to the left and front, because we want to use the ditch to be like a walkout basement. So, I mean, we'll take care of the water problem. We're not planning to clear the lot of vegetation.
Sir, which, where are you located? I'm sorry.
It's right behind me.
Right behind.
It's lined into the south. And I believe the property line cuts right in the middle of where the project is going to be, so it'll be part of the next-door neighbors also.
You're to the west, I think, which right?
So you're near the southwest corner?
Yes.
Are you lot four or three?
Lot four.
Okay, so you're to the west.
Right.
Just, okay. So we can require pools, drainage, but that's really the job of the building inspector to do that. And it's in the ordinance. You, as the homeowner next door, and certainly we can mention it in our decision, that the drainage must be maintained on the property. But I think you would have to also make sure you go to the building department and say, "When you issued this permit, I want it in the file, that drainage has to be put in, and the building inspector has to inspect it before the COs issued."
Right.
That is just something that I would do, if I was that concerned. But we're here technically just to deal with the area variance. Do you have any suggestions as to where the house should be located?
Well, I mean, they probably have more of a, more of an idea of either where they want it or where it's logical.
Yeah, this is what we're proposing it, so that's where...
That's your logical place of advice.
Yeah, same.
I mean, if they build it down in the hole, they're going to get the water, too.
Sir, sir, how, how...
You're going to put the house, so you want it flat, right, clearly, but...
Sir, how, if you don't mind me asking, how big is your lot?
It's an acre and a quarter, almost. I have a, the survey of my lot and next-door neighbors.
That'd be great if we could see that.
And every other property that adjoins it, but...
This is all behind Fire Lane?
Yes. Yeah.
Brand-new zoning.
Adjoining properties.
Yes, that would be great if, yeah. Stay at the mics, or bring it up.
Or bring the, either way.
This also shows that there's a 50-foot buffer on the back of all the properties on Carron Court. So there's a 50-foot dead spot in the back of every property, which...
I bet you they're all disturbed now.
No, they're not. They're...
Really? They have all been undisturbed?
Yeah, they're all, uh...
That's good. Good to hear.
You know, so conforming, I don't know what you guys consider conforming, but all the properties behind this project don't conform with this project, because they have 50-foot buffers.
While these subdivisions were done, this one was particularly done, who did this, Galfo?
No, I did.
Oh, you did it yourself?
Yes.
There you go. This, this lot was created probably prior to zoning.
Right.
In the 50s, the 40s, when people were building bungalows there. So they're probably trying to take advantage of a single lot, and they need to deal with the drainage. That's about as far as you can go. I mean, if they're in single and separate ownership, they have a right to build a house.
Right.
But they have to maintain their water runoff. And the towns should be there to support that.
Right, but do you need to give that much footage close to the property? That's what you guys are here for.
Well, what are you suggesting?
I haven't seen anything, to be honest.
Why don't you come up here for a minute and take a look at the survey?
It's right here. I have just a...
Well, let them look at ours. It's official. Give them a minute. I think no matter where you put the house, Rich, it's going to have to be mitigated somehow.
Yes.
How about the deck? Is there a back deck also?
Yeah, there's a small deck on that.
Small deck.
I don't think it's that big.
Must be so small, I don't see it.
It's round the park.
It's what happens when we get our 60, buddy.
It's kind of small.
Oh, let's see.
So this is basically proposed where all the, all the water runoff is going to run downhill. Your house is basically up higher on the hill?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a walkout. So from the front, looks like a one-story house. On the back, it looks like a two-story, because the way, you know...
Okay. I mean, I can't propose where they want to put the house. I'm not going to, I'm not going to steer that.
Well, they're here for an area variance, so, you know, we can move it around a little here and there, but is it going to change what's going to happen? Probably not. So we can put a condition that, that the owner provide an engineer's report that it could sustain its own water runoff.
That's best. That's...
And the inspection must be done prior to the issuance of a CO. That's fair.
Right.
How's that?
Great.
Okay. This is your...
Sir, how big did you say your lot was?
Almost an acre and a quarter.
Almost an acre, right?
You want to give us that back?
Almost an acre and a quarter?
Correct.
It's not 35,000 square feet approximately?
No.
No?
Every one of those lots is an acre plus.
Which lot is...
Lot four.
Lot four?
Yes.
So it's basically 268 by 131?
I bet you it's over, well over an acre.
So 268 times 131. It's 35,000. An acre is like 42,000.
More property was given from the cul-de-sac that's there. That cul-de-sac was taken apart. More property was donated from the cul-de-sac back to the front of that lot.
Do you have an individual survey for your lot?
What does that have to do with it?
No, just, I'm just saying, you know, rough calculations is 35,000, an acre is 41,000. You were saying it was an acre and a quarter, and quick math gives you 35,000.
Either way, all right.
So it's not an acre.
We, I believe it's more than an acre.
The GPS, uh, town GPS I have.
Say that?
I have the town GPS.
Yeah.
May I see it?
Yeah.
What's the GPS say?
The only reason why I'm saying is that if, if, if the calcula, my calculations are right, at 35,000, the applicant is requesting 30,000. I'm just...
Town GPS is 1.26.
Oh, so it is 1.26. Okay. All right.
It's always so smart to put those building envelopes in. So if we do a resolution and I say that the set condition would require an engineer's report inspection prior to issuing service CO, that it maintains its own water runoff, that kind of thing?
As the water runoff works, it's...
Well, that's, that's what the law is there for, to protect that. Anytime there's a development of a lot. So that's why we have that in the statute.
Right.
And we did that back in, I think, about 2001 or 2002. Here's your map, Rich.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Nobody else?
Okay.
Everybody else? Oh, sorry. You said that already. Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I move that appeal, 19-27, for 121 Fire Lane, Waiting River, New York. Tax map number's 3728.3, RB zoning, RB80 zoning for the variances and relief from chapter 301, section 31, where the proposed lot size for the single-family dwelling is 30,000 square feet, and the minimum is 80,000 square feet. Where the proposed front yard setback is 40 feet, and the minimum required is 60 feet. Where the proposed side yard setback is 25 feet, and the minimum required is 30 feet. Where proposed rear setback is 52.6, and the minimum required is 75 feet. And where the rear proposed rear deck is 48.3 feet from the property line, and the minimum of, required of 75 feet. Be approved with the following conditions: That the owner or builder is required to have an engineer's report and inspection prior to the issuance of a CO, so that the water is maintained on the property.
Second?
Second?
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted, and two weeks from now, pick work should be ready for you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project, and good luck with the neighbors, too.
Thank you.
Keep everybody happy.
Have fun. Did you get it all there?
Okay.
Appeal number 2019-028, Manor Lane Revocable Trust, 174 Manor Lane, Jamesport. Tax map number 647211. APC zoning for variances and a relief from chapter 301, section 38A. Where proposed living area is 1,043 square feet, and minimum required is 1,500 square feet. Section 39, where side yard setbacks are 10 feet and 15 feet, and minimum required is 30 feet. And where combined side yard is 25 feet, and minimum required is 65 feet.
Who's representing? If you kindly raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and your address, sir.
Paul Lewis, President Lewis and Son Building, 30 Belmont Avenue, Plainview, New York.
You have the floor.
I'm here seeking a permission to build a single-family home on a lot which is character very narrow. I believe the lot was created back in the inception of 1955. And there is some other lots in the area that are, it's a 10,000-square-foot lot. Neighborhood across the street has also 100 by hundreds. It's just that the nature of this lot is a 50 by 200, which created a side yard problem in order to build a decent house.
You're doing calculations, too, there, Frank?
Sorry.
Doing your little copy, like...
What's the name of this, RB80?
APC.
Oh, it's agriculture. What's the...
What's the, um. So you have a total of living area of fourteen hundred and three square feet?
Correct.
And what's on the first floor?
Uh, just living space.
Seven hundred and something square feet?
Uh, a little, no, it's a little bigger on the first than it is the second.
Did we put in anything in A P Z that requires a minimum square footage, like the one in Wading River? Do you remember that case? You have to have, like, a certain amount of square footage, so. Do you have A P Z, uh, available?
I do.
Thank you.
I believe it's fifteen hundred square feet total for A P Z, which I was unaware of.
No, that's all right, it's just that, if you're coming for a variance, some sections of the residential zoning requires X amount of square foot for the first floor.
Oh, I see.
So if you're doing a two-story and you have seven hundred and seventy-five square feet, let's say, you may need a variance for that as well.
I see.
So, we're gonna afford you the opportunity, if that is the case, to amend your application. But we have to make sure.
Gotcha.
Sir, what are the setbacks of your neighbors?
Um, next door is a ranch house, on either side is a ranch house, and I'd say they're.
They're a little closer to it.
At, you know, probably the thirty-five or forty-foot, pretty far. It's a good distance. Kept the house as narrow as possible to keep the largest side yards we could.
Yeah.
It's only a twenty-five foot wide home.
And it's only a fifty-five, fifty-foot wide property?
Right.
So, you're kind of restricted.
Restricted, correct.
I mean, I mean, the, the size of the home you're proposing is, is appropriate for the size of the lot, you know?
It's in character of the neighborhood too.
I would hope so. Did you provide a single and separate?
Search, yes, there is one there.
Do you have it with you?
Uh, I handed it in with the application. I think it's single and separate since it's.
Oh, Chicago, yeah. Apparently five little lots in that area is the same size.
Couple of doors down is the Sears House Kit, it was in the paper, so that's a very small home.
Sears.
Sears had house kits.
Yeah, you're going back a long time.
Yeah, four hundred and thirty bucks it cost.
That was N. Robb.
Yeah, right. That can't be more than eight hundred square feet, that house.
Well, they've changed the zoning since then.
Understood.
Uh, you know, so you're, you're, you're coming before us asking for relief, can you, can you provide us examples?
So if you look at A P Z, there's no minimum square foot.
In the immediate area, similar to what you're asking for?
Uh, square footage wise?
Yeah.
Uh, straight across the street is, uh, two ten thousand square foot lots.
And, and as far as the setbacks are concerned, I mean, I know it's a very small lot, but, you know, the, your, your application, do you have, uh, can you provide us similar examples?
For side yards?
For what you're asking, yeah.
I don't have side yards, setbacks of the adjoining properties, you know, the neighborhood. It's a pretty mixed use, you know, mixed neighborhood, it's a little, uh, neighborhood farm across the street or on an angle. Character of the neighborhood is ranch houses, which are generally wider, so that tells me it's wider lots.
Yeah. Attached garage, carport, some enclosed porches, breezeways, there shall be provided not less than fifteen hundred square feet of living area. It doesn't delineate up or down. So he, that's the minimum house size, so he's asking for a variance for fourteen hundred and three square feet.
Yeah, you know, if, if it's the board's wish, I could make the house a little deeper in the back, uh, to get to the fifteen hundred.
But that's not the issue, the issue was in certain zones in our town, the first floor requirements. In this particular case, it doesn't say first or second floor, it just says minimum fifteen hundred square foot.
Right, I did read that and I didn't see that, I agree with you.
So, I think you're okay.
Okay.
As far as that's concerned. I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Did you bring the whole clan out with you tonight?
Nobody, just me, my attorney's in Iceland.
You can't find someone to schedule anywhere, huh? In the code, they don't make it easy. Okay, well, anyway, I moved that, the appeal of Manor Lane Revocable Trust, one seventy-four Manor Lane, Jamesport, six hundred forty-seven two eleven, located in the A P Z zoning for variance and relief from chapter three oh one, section thirty-eight A, where the proposed living area is fourteen oh three and the minimum is fifteen hundred, and section thirty-nine, where the side yard is ten and fifteen and the minimum required is thirty, where the combined side yards is twenty-five feet and the minimum required is sixty-five feet. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. So move.
Second?
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so your appeal's been granted.
Thank you.
About two weeks, all the paperwork, we, we together and continue on your project.
Thank you.
Best of luck. So, whoever you're ready.
Uh, this is also reserved decisions now, huh? Only gonna hear this one, this is not gonna be. This is a new case, anything that happens, huh? So, so we gotta hear.
Appeal number two thousand nineteen zero two nine, Riverhead Retail Partners LLC, two forty-five West Main Street, Riverhead. Tax map number six hundred one twenty-eight three fifty and fifty-one, P R C zoning for variances and a relief from chapter three oh one, two thirty-six A one, where landscape area of nine point three feet in depth is proposed and the minimum required is twenty-five feet.
I would guess you're either a, uh, an attorney or a funeral director, uh, which may it be?
He's a funeral director, so don't take it personally.
Sometimes it feels like I'm a funeral director. You're an attorney? I am, Keith Archer. Please state your name and your, and your address, please. Sure, Keith Archer, I'm a partner of Harris Bluman Archer, four forty-five Broad Hall Road, Melville, New York. To the applicant. Evening. May I?
You may.
You have the floor? Thank you. Oh, good evenings, chairman, members of the board. Um, we represent the applicant, uh, Riverhead Retail Partners, um, in connection with this request, it's a, it's a, seemingly a rather unique request. It, it's not even a side yard variance, but what the applicant is proposing, well, let's talk about where it is first. We're talking about a parcel located two, two forty-five West Main Street, which is on the south side of Main Street, just east of Osborne Avenue. The lot is approximately thirty-nine thousand square feet.
Thank you.
Um, and backs up to the Peconic River. Uh, the property was formerly, um, in order, the building's still there, actually, um, an auto repair facility, I'm sure everybody remembers that. Um, it's now closed. And really what brings us here is the applicant's proposed use is for a, a seven-eleven, uh, retail store. Retail use is permitted in the, uh, P R C district. And what brings us here, and I wanna give a little bit of background also, but what brings us here is the somewhat unique requirement that, um, when a parcel of land abuts another parcel that's owned by, I'll say, the municipal government, to be used for parker recreation use, that there be a twenty-five foot landscape, I don't know whether I'm quoting it exactly, a landscape buffer. We are proposing nine point three feet now. Plus, at the, at the, at the, at the, uh, closest point. Let me give you some background now. We filed this application with the planning board approximately a year ago, in July of two thousand eighteen. For the next, oh, I don't know, eight or nine months, um, we spent a lot of time working with the planning board, representatives of the A R B, um, in developing not only an appropriate site plan for the site, but also, since the property is in a historic district, the appropriate elevations. And Eric Mine from Bowler Engineering will, will go over them and describe them, uh, for you in a moment. So, we ultimately came to an agreement with the, um, the planning board, again, with input from all of the other boards. But as a result of that, um, there is, uh, one, I wouldn't call it a structure, it's, it's an enclosure, garbage enclosure, that's on the west side of the property. That's at a closest point, nine point three feet from the, um, from the property line. The property directly to the west is the property that was acquired by Suffolk County. And I don't, I don't think we, uh, as Thomas may know, but I don't think we yet know what the proposed use is, um, by Suffolk County. Uh, I received a phone call today, uh, from Robert Braun. Apparently the Parks Commissioner wanted to know what the proposed use was, uh, and I told him, um, their only concern was whether or not there was gonna be access to, um, were actually an encroachment onto the county's property. I told him, well, look, you've gotta, there, there is a fence now on the county's property on the east side. And, um, as Eric Mine will explain, and I told this to Mr. Braun, we're also gonna be putting up, um, a fence for the better part of that, um, westernly property line. So I think, I think maybe the best thing to do is for, um, Eric to, uh, describe the site plan, uh, for the board, and then we, we can answer off, you have to answer any questions that board members have now, um, but probably best left for after Mr. Mine's presentation. And if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Eric Mine, Bowler Engineering, twenty-nine twenty-nine Expressway Drive North, Hop Hog, New York, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, thank you, chairman, members of the board, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, I know it's getting late. Simply put, uh, Mr. Archer indicated it's a proposed seven-eleven store, approximately three thousand sixty-two square feet. We went through several iterations to lay out this property, um, some of the restrictions being, um, the access from West Main Street, which is, uh, D O T jurisdiction, so we came up with an access scheme, we were able to get them to digest and approve. We have our bond letter from them, which is essentially their approval. We also worked significantly with the D E C, we front on the Peconic River, uh, much of the rear portion of the property, as it exists today, is undisturbed. We, we're proposing for it to remain undisturbed, which is certainly what the D E C was in favor of. So we are pro- proposing a six-foot-high PVC fence, uh, around the perimeter of the site, as near to the building and property boundaries as possible. So for the remainder of the layout, we had to make the functionality of the parking work, so we have the appropriate access aisles and parking stall depths. And finally, of course, we need to locate the trash enclosure. Being sensitive to the adjoining property to the east, which is a residence, we moved the trash and the parking as far westward as possible, which is kind of where we landed, why we are here today, with a nine foot, nine point three foot, um, buffer to the west of the county property, whereas twenty-five feet, uh, is required. We could've avoided this by putting the trash enclosure on the east side of the building, and then we wouldn't need this variance, but again, trying to be sensitive neighbors, um, this is what we came up with. And that's essentially the gist of, uh, why we're here.
Do you already have any questions to jump?
Um, well, let's just see what everybody else has to say, if anybody else has anything to say.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Please step up. That's fine, just kindly step up to the microphone, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Please kindly speak into the microphone and state your name and your address.
Pull it down a little bit, sir.
Good evening, uh, Don Fyodo, I reside at one sixty-seven Forest Avenue, Shirley. I'm here, uh, on the proposed business establishment, uh, two forty-five West Main Street, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Sandra and Videl Tetson, uh, to have the adjoining property. And they have a few concerns, uh, the, the, one of the, the major concern is that they're talking about, uh, a twenty-five foot in-depth requirement. And, uh, and they're proposed, uh, only of.
Nine point three.
Nine, nine point, nine feet, three inches.
But that's on the west. They are, you're, you're, the people you're speaking for are on the east side, correct?
Correct, correct.
Right, and the, and the west.
It's on the west side.
The west side is the Suffolk County property that's.
Nine point three.
That's adjoining. Has, has everybody been able to look at this map? Why don't you come up here and we'll show you.
Come right up to the table, come around, come around.
The mic's alive there.
Listen, that's, that's fine, there's no hurry for this, though, just.
Of course.
You certainly may.
Concerns, like I said, whatever they do on the west, it's, you know, they were concerned with the east.
I got you.
I mean, I'll have fresh coffee every morning, I'm not, I mean, I'm not opposed to this.
So you wanna, you wanna put for the fence?
Can I have, like, a little pulley system and get coffee brought in? But I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, I just don't have concerns about lighting, I have concerns about where the dumpster is gonna be, I have concerns about security.
Lighting, lighting is?
I have concerns as if you were having a seven-eleven put right next to your house, you know, you'd have.
Okay, well.
I would be.
You have a lot of.
You have to get back to the mic and speak into the record, okay? You're welcome.
I was kinda curious.
Are we going to take a copy of this?
Sure.
In fact, one of the.
You can have a copy of it.
You can take your copy, take that one.
Ah, and you get a copy and you get a copy.
I have to memorize the rest.
Thank you.
And where was it?
All right, young lady, you're going to speak? Well, then, oh, you wanna finish up, you have anything else to say, sir?
Don?
All right, young lady, if you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
State your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Sandra Tzen Fyodo, I live at two thirty-nine West Main Street, we're at the, uh, to the east of the proposed seven-eleven. Um, like I said, we're not opposed to it, I mean, we've had that building vacant for a long time. We do have some concerns, we have concerns about lighting, uh, noise, um, let's see, what else did I have? The dumpster, security, when are the deliveries gonna be made, are they gonna be all night long with deliveries? I mean, we are literally right next door. So there are some concerns that I do have.
Well, they're open twenty-four hours a day.
And they're open twenty-four hours, yeah, I mean, I wanted some, you know, and, and to give you a little history, you know, that, that structure that was there, it used to be my grandfather's gas station years ago, so, we do have, you know, roots here, we do have, you know.
Yeah.
I remember being a kid, you know, being at the gas station, so, it is kind of, you know, sad to see it go, but something does need to be replaced. A seven-eleven wasn't exactly what I was thinking of, but, you know, um, you know, but we do have some concerns, and this is the first time we saw the plan, so, you know, we just got the letter to be here today.
Well, now that you saw the layout.
I saw the layout.
How do you feel about it?
Well, I mean, I saw it for five seconds on a.
The, the.
You know, I do.
All the issues that you had about loading and noise and all that, that's all.
And the dumpsters, that's all on the west side.
That's all gonna be on the west side.
So the only thing that you're worried about is noise and lighting, and lighting, they're not proposing anything.
Dumpster's gonna be on the west side, everything's gonna be on the west side, 'cause I know they said they were gonna try and be nice to the people on the east.
So, you know, and I, like I said, I'm not opposed to it, I'm not gonna sit here and say, I oppose. So, it's gonna happen. Do you know we have an ordinance, it's called Dark Skies Compliance?
What's that?
Dark Skies, it's in the ordinance.
Okay.
And part of their approval, they're gonna be required to provide low types of luminars in the code. So they'll provide that low lighting.
Right.
And I think that shouldn't be an issue for you?
They're not asking for anything other than what the code says.
What the code says.
Yeah, meeting everything else.
All right, yeah, and we're not gonna have, like, blinking signs, there a bedroom window all night, so, that'd be good. Yeah, he's gonna, they said nine-foot fencing, right?
Six-foot.
Six-foot, I'm sorry, six-foot, six-foot fencing.
Six-foot vinyl fence.
Six-foot fencing?
Yeah. Our code only allows for six feet.
Also, all right, that's another issue too. Is there just gonna be a fence, or is there gonna be vegetation? Is it gonna be just my house fence in the, in the seven-eleven?
I think it's a combination of both.
Combination of both?
I think he has, I think he has a photo for it. Right.
I get to take this?
Yes. So to address the lady question, eleven foot high, as high as they can go, and they're gonna be around the perimeter of the site, throwing inwards, so they're not gonna be...
They're not gonna be throwing, okay.
Landscaping wise, you can see significant numbers of trees. These are six-foot-high overbodies.
And this is all, this is all DC protected, right, okay?
Exactly. And you'll have whatever existing mature trees are along the property line, they're gonna stay. See that vertical screen permanently, that's gonna take them down, we're working on it. And we're proposing a six-foot high, so these are...
But the trees are a fence.
I can't see.
Sixty-one feet?
Sixty-one feet from the building.
Okay. Sixty-one feet, okay. Yeah, this is a...
Okay, now.
Sixty-one feet is gonna be here. Here we are. This is gonna be the sixty-one feet in the building. And then it's, it's gonna be six-foot high fencing, Dad, with...
After we get the coordinates.
All right, so why don't we leave a comment period so that...
Yes, okay. All the bands to concerns for.
I think we have a date in September twelve.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
What's the date? September twelfth?
September twelfth?
Can I give you that slip?
I know, why didn't we call?
I think we just set our own time for any kind of comments.
September twelfth, yes.
Written comments.
Reserve decision, it's a coordinate review.
All right, ladies.
Let's give them a twenty-one day timeframe to provide any written comments with concerns.
Okay. All right, what we're gonna do, we're gonna give you a twenty, twenty-one day time span to, you know, write a letter, let us know how you feel about it.
You could go and write any concerns.
Yeah, this was our, my concerns, right, you know?
This is not, nothing's gonna happen until September twelfth, anyway.
September twelfth?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, you know, Mr. Chairman, we're doing a reserve decision, just September twelfth?
Will I be notified again, or like a certified letter? I'm just gonna have to come. Okay.
Chair, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Since there really doesn't seem to be, they're not opposed to the project.
Right.
Do we have to really reserve this until September twelfth? We've been, we've been going through this since...
You don't have to tell us.
For a year.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a coordinator review that has to take place?
There's a what?
A coordinated review.
Planning, I believe planning has already done a coordinator review.
Well, we have a new here.
They already did it because it's in a historic district.
They just adopted the resolution. They just adopted the resolution to do a coordinated review and request lead agency.
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Typically.
And just for the record, our health department application is far enough along. All we're waiting for is the secret determination, so, thank you.
So again, however you wanna word it, we're, we're putting this off.
Well, we're gonna leave the hearing open for twenty-one days for any written submission. If you have anything else you'd like to, or concern that you see, let us know in writing. If not, there'll be a reserve decision.
Paperwork in front of you, and you can always, if you get a card off of this gentleman...
It's already done.
Okay, so, you know, let's make everybody happy as best we can.
Make it happy. My grandson will be happy. Unlimited slurpees.
That's extortion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for stopping by. All right, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Frank?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I hope I get this right. I move that appeal, twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, Riverhead Retail Partners, two forty-five West Main Street, is a reserve decision until coordinator review is completed. However, before then, we're leaving it open for twenty-one days for written comments, and we will meet again on September twelfth. Is that correct?
It's all due to me. You have anything to say?
If there's a meeting on the twelfth? Okay, that's when we'll do it. Sorry, Counselor, but that's how we have to play by the rules. I mean, we can give you an okay, and then you can still have an invalid permit, but that's our...
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So I want to thank everyone for coming, coming up and stepping up this, the plate, asking questions. Thank you. I make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Show move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much for your time.